So we said the hotspot, I think?
Which is it?
This one right there.
Testing.
Hotspot? Oh, okay.
Good message to me.
Well, it says disconnect. So that means disconnect to them.
All the city council members.
It has a little, um, like a...
Yeah, like a little upside down magnet or something.
If it does, like a little thing that's connected, you probably have to do...
There we are.
I have 6:30 imprinted on my brain, and that's as far as I could go. So first item on the agenda is the roll call, and it looks like we're mostly all here. Mr. Ristucci is in the parking lot, and I don't see Mr. Henry, so mark them as absent. Second item, approve the minutes of the 2018 meeting of January 8th. And that meeting is when we elected our officers. We approved the previous minutes. And I guess that's pretty much it.
I would make the motion to approve the meetings from 2018.
I second that.
And a second to approve the meetings or the minutes. I apologize. Any discussion or debate on this item?
Nope.
Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes of the January 2018 meeting, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no. I too vote aye. Minutes are approved. Electional officers. First item is president. And I will now accept nominations for the president.
I nominate Dean Burisma.
Second?
Well, okay.
Didn't even hear that train coming.
I did. I, you know, well, and I have to say, I'm probably the most experienced chairman of this particular committee as by virtue of 2017, so.
You are, by far.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations?
No.
Say it again. Say it again. You have to say it three times.
Do I have to say it three times?
That's how it goes.
All right. Hearing none. All right. Well, all in favor of myself as president of this committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very well. I'd say that's pretty much a unanimous railroading. So I don't have to pass the gavel to anybody else at this point. Then we will now accept nominations for vice president.
Tyler Skilprout for vice president.
I second that.
Okay. We have a nomination of Tyler Skilprout. Do we have anybody else? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Tyler Skilprout as vice president, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Tyler will be our vice president. And secretary, do we hear nominations for the secretary?
I nominate Mr. Martin. Mr. Arnold Martin.
Nomination for Arnold Martin as secretary. Other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Arnold Martin as secretary, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Mr. Martin, you are our secretary.
Get for something.
All right. That concludes the business for Sunnyside Industrial Development Corporation. Unless there are other comments, hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mr. Ristucci, seconded by Mr. Henry. Any debate or discussion?
I've got a couple of questions, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Gero.
Item 2C4. This is the vouchers, 20 vouchers, 95620 through 95636. Page 2. Check number 95627. Payable to Garrison Law Offices. It's showing 6625 was a payment, 1 of 24 for public defender contract, and right below it's showing payment 13 of 48 municipal court judge. So I'm thinking that might be an error there, because it's showing municipal court. I don't think he's a judge.
I'm not entirely sure.
I think he's a prosecutor, isn't he?
He's a prosecutor.
Defending prosecutor, yeah. Make sure that we get that clarified. If it's meant for the judge, it's meant for our public defender.
Madam Mayor, I will ask to check into that. I don't have information on that at this time. And our administrative and finance director, she's been out ill this past week. She's still recovering today. And so as soon as I can get additional information on that, I will do so and bring that back to the council's consideration.
Also, there's item 2C6 and 2C2, very first page in both. There's EFT for CPLs through 123118, two different amounts. I'm not sure if it's just that we didn't get one of those out to pay those, and we did a different, a separate electronic fund transfer? Or if it's supposed to be only one, and we got two of those? 2C6 and 2C2, very first page.
If I may, could you, I'm sorry, I missed which item.
Very first one, 2C2. Different licensing, ZFT, $234 CPL through 123118.
There, I see it. Thank you, sir.
If we look at 2C6, there's another, very first page, very first item, but it's a different amount.
Is that the same?
Well, different amounts? I just want to get some clarification that it's not an accident that we sent two different payments by mistake, or if it's two different transactions that we missed include of one potential license in the first batch, and we should have sent a second one? Just want to get some clarification on that one.
We'll work on that for the council, yes.
It does have the same dates, so I just want to make sure we get those correct. Just one comment. Going through all these, there's a couple of items in there that seem to be a little bit out of, I know we're in a pretty tight budget, obviously. There's a couple of items in there that kind of caught my eye. One was noise cancelling for the HR department, and one was a newspaper subscription for the PD. And I know they're not big purchase items. The only thing is that we are on a tight budget, and if we could avoid some of these expenses that don't contribute to the city's well-being or the city's benefit, I really do think we need to cutbacks on some of these. They're in there, obviously, and they're for last year, but I don't think, knowing what our budget looks like, we need to be spending money on something that doesn't really contribute to the city in general.
I can weigh in on the noise cancelling. That is a device used so she can have meetings in her office, so that people can't hear, because her office is really easy to hear, so when she's got people in there having confidential conversations.
Privacy, okay.
That's noise cancelling, so that she can have a conversation, and not everybody in the outside area can hear what's going on.
That's the HR office?
Which makes sense. I thought it was like a ocean, you know, making noise and kind of trying to make the room, I don't know.
It kind of is.
Okay. The white noise thing. There you go. I thought it was something of that nature, like, whoa, that doesn't really make sense. I want one of those in my office. But yeah, obviously, privacy issues, and that makes more sense. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. Boersma.
Yeah, just a comment here. I know last fall, at one point, we had, somebody had made a complaint about the number of meeting minutes that we had to peruse before a meeting, and tonight we have 10. And that's a lot of reading, and it's sometimes difficult to remember everything that happened in a meeting and make sure that things are accurate. And I noticed that in this period, that we're covering tonight in the minutes, that we've had three regular meetings, two of which we could have handled a few of these. Are we able to kind of get to the point now where we can keep that to a manageable level?
That's our hope, is that we will have our minutes at each meeting, as opposed to waiting, you know, two or three, two months or something. And we're starting off the year well, because our workshop was just last week, and the minutes are in here, so we're starting off well.
We've covered a lot of ground since I covered it.
We've covered a lot of ground, so yes. I was reading through those earlier, and there was, I found some things that I thought I'd done, and I was happy to see that I was right. Okay, so any further discussion on the consent agenda? So the items that Mr. Gero has brought up will be looked into and brought back to us?
That's correct. It will be part of my report at the next council meeting.
Are they being pulled, Madam Mayor?
No, I don't want them pulled. I just want to get clarification for the next meeting.
There's clarifications.
Absolutely.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. A two vote aye. Motion carries. And the motion was made by Mr. Ristucci and seconded by Mr. Henry. Motion carries. Now, Mr. Mattson is up from YVCOG, the executive director of YVCOG, Yakima Valley Conference of Governments, and he's here tonight to talk to us something about the tiny house presentation that's happening in the county, and bring us some clarity on what we may be looking at. So take it away, Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mayor Hart. Good evening, council members, staff, pleasure to be here. Larry Mattson, Yakima Valley Conference of Governments. Just in, last fall, we wrapped up a pilot project on the tiny home project, and I wanted to present the results of that to you. I understand it's something you may be considering here locally. So I'll share the results of that pilot project with you, and then I wanted to give you some lessons learned, obviously, through this project, but also some maybe larger scale guidance as far as the land use and building codes go. Yeah. Is there any way we can get any more contrast? I don't know with the.
Could we turn off some lights over here, so we can, so we can see the, does that help?
Next slide, please. It's up to you guys. It kind of washes out, so I don't know if you want to.
Is there one more light we can turn out back there?
Fortunately, these are all on the same.
Well, if everybody will behave themselves, we could pretend we're at the movies for a minute or two.
If I start snowing, it's not my fault, no.
It's not going to snow, although my hip is procrastinating that. Is that better? Okay, thank you.
So this is an exterior of the 1 of 2. So the initial pilot project was conceived, and by the way, I want to let you know, philosophically, I'm a big advocate of pilot projects. It's a chance for us to test assumptions, concepts, and ideas, and also learn lessons about what may or may not work on a variety of different scales in a cost-effective manner, without investing a whole lot of cash on the front end. So this is one of the units. There are two, side by side. The other one looks just like this one. These are both located on a church parking lot in Teras Heights. Let's see, what else can I tell you about that? Yeah, the next slide, please. So this is an interior shot. Trying to think. Bathroom got cut off. Oh, yeah. The slides are kind of compressed, so you can't quite see. On the left-hand side, there's a shower stall. So this one is fully plumbed. This unit is fully plumbed. It's got a shower stall there and a toilet, flushable toilet. And then on the right-hand side, here where the woman in the black dress is standing, there's a sink, small counter space, so food prep, basically. Next slide. And then there's a loft. This is generally where people sleep. I'm not sure how they get up there. I don't see a ladder or anything like that. So that's how this unit was constructed. You can see, I think, just through the, you know, the way the ceiling is cove there, these are pretty thickly built, and I'll talk about the building codes in just a second here. These were built to site-built or stick-built standards, which drove some of the cost factor that we'll talk about in a minute. And I think there's one more slide. Yeah, okay. So as originally proposed, the applicant thought they could provide these units at about $10,000 per unit. And that was based on some research with other nonprofits. And these are, I need to mention too, this was targeted to house the homeless. So there are, you can see on the right side of the graphic there, that it's an affordable housing option to help house the homeless on a temporary basis, but also you're seeing it as a lifestyle choice. People making a conscious decision to scale down, live in a smaller footprint, literally and figuratively. So we have two audiences that we're trying to serve with this type of housing. Back to the housing costs. So yeah, the initial proposal was that they could provide them for about $10,000 a unit. They were going to rely on volunteer and donated labor from YV Tech in the Upper Yakima Valley. And that did not work out. And so at the end of the day, two units were produced for over, you know, it was $50,000 the unit cost. Our grant was only $76,000. So that reflects, the cost that you see reflects donated materials, donated time. So they not only exceeded the budget COG granted them, but also donations drove the cost up there. Some of the things we learned, so land use and zoning codes. The two, the sites, these were going to be located on church property to allow for the temporary, there's a land use exemption for churches if it's temporary, a year or less. And so the thinking was that these would be temporarily sited on church properties for a year or less duration. And so the proponent worked with both the City of Yakima and Yakima County, because at the time, they thought they would locate them on a couple of churches within Yakima city limits, as well as just outside in Teras Heights. So wow. The main driver of cost was the building code. And so these sites, these homes were built as though stick-built. They had to be built on a foundation. The initial proposal envisioned being on skids, so mobile with self-contained water and possibly.
the results of that pilot project with you, and then I wanted to give you some lessons learned, obviously, through this project, but also some maybe larger-scale guidance as far as the land use and building codes go. Yeah. Is there any way we can get any more contrast? I don't know with the...
Could we turn off some lights over here, so we can see the...does that help?
Next slide, please. It's up to you guys. It kind of washes out, so I don't know if you want to...
Is there one more light we can turn out back there?
Fortunately, these are all on the same...
Well, if everybody will behave themselves, we could pretend we're at the movies for a minute or two.
If I start snowing, it's not my fault, no.
It's not going to snow, although my hip is procrastinating that. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So this is an exterior of the one of two. So the initial pilot project was conceived, and by the way, I want to let you know, philosophically, I'm a big advocate of pilot projects. It's a chance for us to test assumptions, concepts, and ideas, and also learn lessons about what may or may not work on a variety of different scales in a cost-effective manner, without investing a whole lot of cash on the front end. So this is one of the units. There are two, side by side. The other one looks just like this one. These are both located on a church parking lot in Terrace Heights. Let's see, what else can I tell you about that? Yeah, the next slide, please. So this is an interior shot. Trying to think. Bathroom got cut off. Oh, yeah. The slides are kind of compressed, so you can't quite see. On the left-hand side, there's a shower stall. So this one is fully plumbed. This unit is fully plumbed. It's got a shower stall there and a toilet, flushable toilet. And then, on the right-hand side, here where the woman in the black dress is standing, there's a sink, small counter space, so food prep, basically. Next slide. And then there's a loft. This is generally where people sleep. I'm not sure how they get up there. I don't see a ladder or anything like that. So that's how this unit was constructed. You can see, I think, just through the, you know, the way the ceiling is cove there, these are pretty thickly built, and I'll talk about the building codes in just a second here. These were built to site-built or stick-built standards, which drove some of the cost factor that we'll talk about in a minute. And I think there's one more slide. Yeah, okay. So, as originally proposed, the applicant thought they could provide these units at about $10,000 per unit, and that was based on some research with other nonprofits. And these are, I need to mention, too, this was targeted to house the homeless. So there are, you can see on the right side of the graphic there, that it's an affordable housing option to help house the homeless on a temporary basis, but also you're seeing it as a lifestyle choice. People making a conscious decision to scale down, live in a smaller footprint, literally and figuratively. So we have two audiences that we're trying to serve with this type of housing. Back to the housing costs. So yeah, the initial proposal was that they could provide them for about $10,000 a unit. They were going to rely on volunteer and donated labor from YV Tech in the Upper Yakima Valley. And that did not work out. And so, at the end of the day, two units were produced for over, you know, it was $50,000 the unit cost. Our grant was only $76,000. So that reflects, the cost that you see reflects donated materials, donated time. So they not only exceeded the budget COG granted them, but also donations drove the cost up there. Some of the things we learned, so land use and zoning codes. The two, the sites, these were going to be located on church property to allow for the temporary, there's a land use exemption for churches, if it's temporary, a year or less. And so the thinking was that these would be temporarily sited on church properties for a year or less duration. And so, the proponent worked with both the City of Yakima and Yakima County, because at the time, they thought they would locate them on a couple of churches within Yakima city limits, as well as just outside in Terrace Heights. So, wow. The main driver of cost was the building code. And so, these homes were built as though stick-built. They had to be built on a foundation. The initial proposal envisioned being on skids, so mobile with self-contained water and possibly self-contained septic. They had to be, so there had to be a foundation, had to be fully plumbed, and hooked up to municipal water and sewer systems. As you may know here, I'm not sure what your connection fees are in Sunnyside, but they're typically in the several thousand dollar range for each of those utilities. I know in Terrace Heights, that's what the Terrace Heights Sewer District charges. I'm not sure exactly, but the $3,000 to $5,000 range. Some other jurisdictions have waived their water and sewer connection fees on the affordable housing side. So if you are considering this as an affordable housing option, you may want to consider that. Obviously, the money has to come from somewhere, so I will let you wrestle with that budget issue, if that's what you choose to do. I do know that Walla Walla, they were at the last Association of Washington Cities convention, I think it was in Yakima, and some people from Walla Walla presented, and they have chosen in Walla Walla to waive those connection fees to help increase housing stock. Is there any other slide, Jackie? I think this was the last one. Okay, thank you. I do have a handout, and Jackie, sorry, I didn't get this to you earlier. This is from a publication that the Association of Washington Cities put together. Association of Washington Cities put together about a 40-page guide, and I forget what the title of it is. I'm sorry about that, but they do talk about affordable housing in tiny homes, and so they, there's some excellent guidance in there as you move forward, things to consider. One of the things I discovered is that the building code looks at both tiny homes on wheels and tiny homes with permanent foundations. And the Washington building code breaks those up separately, so if it's on wheels, apparently, it's called a park model home or something like that. And I also want to make you aware that the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, they are taking steps to address this, so they have heard from around the nation. Cities everywhere across the country, right, are struggling with homelessness, and they do have an appendix for tiny homes, and I can leave this with you. But they're addressing it, and that's important, because the locality, Sunnyside included, I believe you adopt the state code by reference and the International Building Code, because if you don't, then the liability would be on you as a city if you deviated from that, if something were to happen. So the good news is, the International Building Code has taken a look at that. They're taking steps to address it. I believe that the appendix addresses, this one is for permanent foundations, so it doesn't address the ones that are on wheels or mobile. And I think that's it. I wanted to give you a real high clip overview today. Mike Shuttleworth is the Planning Manager at the Conference of Governments. He's just a phone caller and email away, 30-plus years of experience. I think he's worked with Jamie quite a bit. So if and when you want to take this to your planning commission, we're ready to help. I'm just thinking, I don't know if we have a model ordinance or a model code that we could share valley-wide, and maybe there's a way we could partner with you to help create that, because I know the other cities in the valley, if they aren't facing it already, will very soon.
I think one of the things that we were trying to do is to avoid going to, having somebody come to us and want to put one up without having already figured out some zoning, some codes, how to put it into our city codes for building housing already. So that was where we were looking at doing it, and I think that we probably agree that having Mr. Shuttleworth come and talk to our planning commission, I was hoping somebody from the planning commission would be here tonight to hear, but that wasn't possible. So, but we are trying to be proactive on moving ahead with this, so that we don't end up in a situation like Yakima did, where you've got a pilot amount of money to do it, and then you kind of run up against some...but it was a good experience, was it not, to go through that?
Yeah, yeah. You know, that's why we do these things, to figure out where the barriers lie. And, you know, the initial thinking was, wow, this is City of Yakima staff, Yakima County staff, but really, they're not to blame. It's, they have the codes. They're the messenger. And so, I was encouraged to see that the International Building Council is looking at it, because that's where the regulation needs to be modified, changed. So they are, the change is happening. And probably from a Sunnyside standpoint, I'm thinking, you know, the first step for you would be your land use codes, which zones are appropriate, which residential zones, or, I don't know if you want to go into commercial or industrial zones as well, but again, that's got to be a community-driven decision that you decide locally.
I think one of the things that we, I don't know, I was going to tell council, that one of the valley manufactured housing out on Fourth Street has several, and I think Mr. Boersma and I talked about that, a couple of model tiny houses that people come in and look at and, you know, put in place here in Sunnyside, but of course, because our codes aren't set, it's, but they really would like to be able to put them on their property if they could meet, if we had codes that would somehow be compliant or, you know, agreeable. So that's one of the things that we are looking at this year, for some affordable housing. I wanted to ask a question, too. I don't know if anybody else have any questions before I go.
No.
One of the areas where I was thinking, you know, you had those two put up for homeless housing on the, on a church property, and I was wondering, in our community, we have a women's shelter, and they have a large area, right now, that's used as parking primarily, but they would probably, the size of these houses are not terribly, do you happen to know the square footage?
200 square feet for the one on the photograph.
Because we were thinking, I was talking with the executive director over there, that, you know, they're outgrowing their shelter, but it wouldn't it be wonderful if they had some transitional housing right on the property, and those would be a perfect kind of situation for them, I would think, if we could, if we had the right zoning, if we had the right land use qualifications requirements.
Yeah, and, you know, I think, I was a planner long ago, and one of the big issues is compatibility, right? And so, that's where you'll lean to lean on your planning commission to get feedback from, what do the residents think of potential compatibility issues? This site, the Terrace Heights site, is right across from a school, an elementary school.
Oh.
And I wasn't involved in that outreach effort, but I do know that the church was as proactive as they could be to say, this is coming. We are thinking about it. What are your thoughts? This will be here in three months, you know, and doing a very frequent and detailed, as it got closer, outreach effort to make sure that the church, or, excuse me, the school was okay, and who would be in the homes, that sort of thing.
Any questions for Mr. Mattson? Well, thank you very much for coming down and sharing the, I don't want to say woes, but pilot program for 24 houses, wasn't it, originally?
Initially.
Getting shut down to two, but they're in use.
Yeah, yep. It's a single mother and children in both.
Oh.
And the church built a, they had a garage next door that they retrofitted into a laundry slash family room, so it's worked out really good. In fact, if you ever wanted to tour that, contact anyone at COG, and we can set up a tour for you.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah. Thank you for the invitation.
Yeah, thank you.
And if I could, can I leave this with Shane, and Shane maybe give it to Jamie, or keep it to yourself?
All right. Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thanks, Larry.
All right. Yeah, let's have a little light on the matter there. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is appointments, selection for primary, and as long as Mr. Mattson's here, we'll do this one first. The primary and alternate delegate to the YVCOG Yakima Valley Conference of Governments. I think currently, Mr. Restucci is serving as the primary delegate to the COG, and I'm serving as the alternate. Is there any objection to us continuing in those positions? Does somebody else want to be on the YVCOG as a delegate and/or? Mr. Restucci, are you agreeable to continue?
I am, Madam Mayor, and I'm still serving as the chair, so...
Oh, well, then you probably want to be there.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any objections to my serving as alternate? Okay, so we don't have to take a vote on that. I think it's just an appointment.
Without objection.
Without objection?
Hearing none, so ordered.
So ordered. Thank you for the wording.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Moving on, next to the next one, the primary and alternate representation to drive committee. Currently, I believe that Deputy Mayor Guerrero is serving as the main delegate, and I think, Mr. Boersma, are you serving as the alternate? Do you have any objections to continue to...
I have no objections, ma'am.
Okay. And Mr. Guerrero, any objection?
I'm okay with a...
Okay.
In the primary.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'll just put this out there. WashDOT reached out to me as a transportation commissioner for Eastern Washington, has asked me to attend those meetings as a transportation commissioner. So if council members, if either one of you can't be at a meeting for whatever reason, if you let me know, I can represent you as well.
So we'll just have that as a FYI, that Mr. Restucci is willing to serve as...
An alternate.
Second alternate.
Yes, ma'am.
So without objection, make that appointment so ordered, to that effect, something like that. Okay, selection of a council representative to Sunnyside United. Now, Ms. Kelly, Kathy Kelly back there, has been serving as founder and/or director of Sunnyside United for several years now, many years now, I can't even remember how many years, but she just recently retired, and their new exec, I believe, is Brenda Barrios, who's, she's interned with Kathy and is a very good representative. And I think, Mr. Boersma, you've been serving as the council rep to that, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, I've been serving as council rep there as long as I've been on council, yeah. So this past year, I feel kind of bad, because I've been unable to participate a great deal because of other scheduling conflicts. If somebody else feels strongly about doing that, then I would be willing to step down, but otherwise, I do rather enjoy that organization and wouldn't mind continuing.
Well, is there any objection, or does anyone else feel strongly about serving on Sunnyside United? I don't see anybody raising their hands. So, Mr. Boersma, if you'd be so kind as to continue on that position.
Be willing to do that, yes.
Thank you very much.
I'm so glad to see this, by the way, Madam Mayor. As the first chair of the organization, it's really neat to see how the organization has come around, and a lot of credit's owed to you.
Absolutely, to Ms. Kelly back there. She's done lion's share of getting that program off the ground and making very fine progress in our community. Okay, without further, without any objection, then, Mr. Boersma will continue to serve on the Sunnyside United Board as a council representative to the Sunnyside United Board, excuse me. All right. So we are to item E, the Department Natural Resources Volunteer Fire Assistant Phase II Grant Award. Consider accepting a grant and authorizing the Sunnyside Fire Department to design and set specifications that comply with the DNR and USFS, which is Department Natural Resources and the United States Forestry Service grant requirements, to obtain bids for the wildland type B, excuse me, three, four, or five engine. Mr. City Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members. Just by way of quick refresh on the information, last year, the fire department was able to work out an arrangement for obtaining a piece of equipment that has, after some minor delay, recently come into our possession. It requires upfitting in order to fulfill the services of wildland fire support. We have some money in the city budget for that, but to close the gap between what was budgeted and what is necessary to actually complete the outfit, Chief Anderson went out and applied for, and recently received notification that we would get this grant for just a little over $11,000. And so, we're seeking your approval tonight. I invite Chief Anderson to elaborate if there's anything further, if there's anything I missed. Thank you.
So is there any discussion from the council as to, any questions for Chief Anderson and or City Manager regarding this application?
How long will the upgrade or the retrofit take? Is there going to be an elaborate process?
Well, all right. So let me, I'll go over it real quick, what we did. When I applied for the grant, we reached out and took a couple of different bids at that time, and got just quotes. And we thought that we were going to shoot for what's type five wildland, it's a little bit on a smaller side. Once the vehicle got here, we realized that maybe we were, it would be kind of a misuse of the vehicle if we under outfitted it, and we're probably better off to use, it'd be better to utilize if we actually went with a little bit bigger water tank on it. So initially, so what I submitted to the state was a projected cost, and this included some in-kind services from YV Tech. YV Tech has offered to do as much retrofitting of the vehicle, fabrication, metal fabrication, et cetera, in exchange for their student projects, and then we would just basically provide the materials. We're still working with YV Tech, trying to get them to also do the paint job and whatnot. In total, I submitted to the state that it would be in the ballpark of $30,000, $31,000. We, I kind of thought it was a little bit of a long shot to get the grant in the first place, but we applied nevertheless, and the maximum that the state's match would be was $12,000, and they came back just under that at $11,875. To answer your question, with the grant, there was a couple of requirements that came along with the grant letter, and I don't think we've necessarily complied with them, so as a result, I kind of, instead of taking the quotes, I think we may have to go out to a couple more vendors and actually get a formal, to actually list out what we want in, compliant with the USFS requirements, and then choose one of those bids of those three. So this is one of the ones where I can't really go off a NASPO or something, it has to be actual bid. To answer your question, though, I think that once we get the bids back, we're hoping to have it available by this season.
Because it does have a deadline of March 15, 2020, I think.
I got a little over a year, correct. But we're shooting for 2019 season, at least partial part of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Anderson? If not, what is the, and there's money in our budget that's already been budgeted for this retrofit?
That's correct. It was, we had set aside, actually, originally, it was going to be about $50,000. Previous city manager cut that back a little bit, but the full, there's at least $20,000 in an equipment reserve fund that we were going to use for this. In addition to that, we also have small tools. Most of this stuff would fall under small tools as well, so there's plenty of money to cover the project.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move to accept a grant and authorize the Sunnyside Fire Department to design and set specifications that comply with DNR, USFS grant requirements, and to obtain bids for wildland type III, type IV, or type V engine.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Restucci to accept the grant and the bid wording, seconded by Mr. Boersma. Is there any discussion, further discussion and/or debate? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. A two vote aye. Motion carries. Well, that's very good work. Thank you. Okay, moving along. This is for later, right?
Yes.
Okay, hang on.
It's coming up.
We've come to the part of the agenda where may our appointments for boards and/or commissions. As I said earlier, talking about the, going through the minutes and seeing who I had appointed and who still needed to be appointed, I realized that, oops, where to go? Uh-huh. That our Parks Board is just about filled. I have two more people to go through the committee for their application. I have two more people to go through the committee to, for their applications. I have the one for Ms., for Vicky Verdusco. Vicky Verdusco is a local business owner, and she has a quite extensive background in parks and recreation. So she looks to be a good fit. And also Mary Schlinker, who is the teacher at the preschool, Ms. Mary's preschool, also looks to be a good fit. So we will send those to committee and wait for their recommendation back. So those are the only two spots, so that will give us a full Parks and, Park and Rec Board as we go forward. I talked with Mr. Grohlender about going ahead and asking those people, says they're already showing an interest, to attend the next meeting, which is going to be held on the 16th, so they can kind of get a feel for what the Parks and Rec is actually going to be doing. So I haven't seen an agenda yet from that, but he's got quite a lot of stuff that he's working on, as you well know, so. So the other people who are on there, I'll just give you the list of the folks who are there. Monica Guillen, Carrie Stone, John Rodriguez, and then, of course, the two members I just mentioned, Mary Schlinker and Vicky Verdusco. Andy Bazey, who is another businessman, Javier Alvarez, who I believe is, I think he's a local pastor, but I think he's also in some way connected with Sunnyside United. Is that right, Ms. Kelly? Right, he's the gang intervention specialist. So I figure he's a pretty good fit for the boards, well. Our youth representative is Haley Schlosser, who's a 4H member, very active in 4H, and she's already shown some really remarkable leadership skills, so she'll be a good fit as well. So when we get the word back, then I think if it's all right with everyone, we'll have those new members come in and we'll do a mass swearing in of those folks. I'm still looking for a couple of people to be on the Parks and Rec Board. I know that Mr. Boersma gave me a name of the lady that I'm still tracking down, but I'm seeing, I've been, been looking for her, so I know I'll catch her sooner or later, and.
Was that the Arts Commission?
For the Arts Commission, yes. If you know of anyone who might like to serve on that board, please give me their names and I'll, I will talk to them. I think all the other boards are pretty much filled. Jackie and I went over those just recently, and so we're in pretty good shape on all the other boards and commissions.
Madam Mayor, I have a quick question. My wife, Delisa, serves on the Arts Commission.
Yes.
Her commission, her, her commission was up, and she hadn't received a call from you or email or anything. She wasn't sure if you were going to reappoint her or not.
Oh, well, then I better get on that, make sure that happens, because I'm sure that we still want to use her as much as we're able. She always has really good ideas on things. And we have a couple of things we do want to finish up on. I think that Mr. Fisher's been wanting to come up with a color scheme for the water tower, and I think I finally got him narrowed down to, we're going to paint it a nice blue.
Brown?
I'm wearing a dirt, sir. It's the color of dirt. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to have it embossed with a lot of sunflowers, our state, our city flower. So it really stands out up there on the hill, because it's the one on the hill that we're talking about, correct?
Yes.
The big one, the really big one. Yeah, that's the one I want to be sky blue with sunflowers on it, so that's what the.
Sky blue with sunflowers, okay.
And the sunflowers are going to be pretty giant, see for the freeway.
Madam Mayor, I did, my wife did speak with Mrs. Van Beek yesterday, and she is still very excited about the possibility of serving on that committee, so.
Her name is Ruth, right?
Ruth Van Beek, yes.
Ruth Van Beek, and she's at the elementary?
Sunnyside Christian.
Sunnyside Christian. Well, I will be getting in touch with that lady, you betcha, and Mrs. Restucci as well.
I'll let her know, Madam Mayor.
All right, tell her not to, not to, she should have called me and smacked me, remind me. That's okay, that's okay. So we're, we're in pretty good shape there, and I understand the, moving on then to the council request, status report, and I think you had that up, yes, is there?
There, Part B.
Part B.
Reports and announcements.
The reports and announcements and.
Yeah, that's under C.
Not in our agenda.
It says B right there, it's other reports.
Maybe I got a different.
They're transposing ours, ours is B as other reports.
Okay, well, we need to switch that, that's all right. Yeah.
Actually, I know Forrest's active agenda, but it really shouldn't be active agenda.
Yeah, these are, these are other items.
Item three is active agenda.
Yeah. That's okay, we'll, we won't, we won't kill the messenger there.
Items from council members is number four.
Items from council members is number four. But you're right, let's go ahead and we can do reports and announcements and/or questions by council. One of the things that I did want to just kind of go back down the line with Mr. Boersma. We talked about, well, at the last meeting, we were, after the last meeting, I believe, we talked about a meeting with the Sunnyside, the Community Development.
Community Development Committee.
Community Development Committee. And so Mr. Restucci and Mr. Boersma, if we have some time this week, and Mr. Boersma was saying he might have time on Wednesday and/or Friday.
That's correct.
Do you have any time? We could do it early in the morning if it's possible.
Okay, I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Have you looked at your calendar and?
Yes, ma'am.
I brought mine. So, Mr. Boersma, you want to just give Mr. Restucci kind of a quick update on what we're going to be talking about?
I am not prepared to do that at this time, I think.
Okay, well, then we will, we will do it then at the meeting. But I do want to say just briefly that we will be talking about the Roger Brooks presentation to some degree. So if you haven't looked at it on YouTube, please take a second or two to kind of take a quick peek at it.
No problem, Madam Mayor. One thing I mentioned with the City Manager at our lunch was that I wanted to see the committee move forward with rules that will allow us to conduct hearings and interview recipients of seed and, and other grants and things of that nature, so that we can ask them poignant questions, so the public can get answers as to where their money is and it's tied up. I mean, airports are, the hospitals are a perfect example. And we've got $5 million of the city's money tied up in that, and we should be able to know where they're at with that and when they plan to break ground.
So yes, rules and policies are certainly going to be a major portion of what we're doing. But I do really want to continue to, while the iron's hot and people are excited to move forward with the project destination. Okay, any other, I'm not sure if there were any other meetings. I went to the, and I don't know, haven't had an opportunity to tell you about the meeting. Went to the YV cog in December, and they had, that's where I heard the information about the tiny house that we had the presentation to all of you this evening. So I was really kind of disturbed by the fact that it costs so much for just two little houses. But that was one of the reasons why I think we were talking about making sure we ran that through our planning commission, giving them some direction on some of the things we're looking at, the building, the, the zones, the housing zones and land use, and also what we might want to do about water and sewer. Do we want to have permanent? Do we want to have ones that can get up and go? So that was part of why Mr. Mattson was here this evening, as a result of that meeting in December. I don't know if anybody else has had any opportunities to go to any other of your meetings, any drive or anything like that, or?
The drive hasn't met.
They haven't met yet.
But they will be meeting at 31st. Drive will be meeting on the 31st, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, that's, Mr. Guerrero just was confirming that. And I think there's probably some other meetings that are coming up.
Airport Board meeting tomorrow night.
Yes.
YV cog general membership in Tappanish at Mount Adams on Wednesday. Trying to think if there's anything else coming up. Madam Mayor, I can do Thursday, by the way, in the morning, if you guys want to meet.
I can make Thursday morning. I have to be at a meeting at 1:00 Thursday afternoon, but I can make Thursday morning.
Did you say about 8:00?
8:00 AM.
You can do 8:00.
8:00 AM.
Where could, do you want to meet at City Hall?
City Hall, Executive Conference Room, Works.
That way, if you're available to be there?
Okay, I'll check on my schedule, yes.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, I will attempt to contact a few people from the community, see if they want to serve on that.
Destination Board?
Yes.
We'll come up with a fancier name for it, but that works for now.
I've got a couple of yeses, but there's a couple more people I'd like to talk to, and I'm waiting for that email from you to get that information.
Oh, here's, here's one that I wanted to pass down to you from Larry Southern, just had some thoughts on it. And his email address is on there, too, in case you're, I think he had some valid points. And the names of the other folks that I had, too, I will email those to you.
Okay, thank you.
So we have YV cog, the Airport Advisory Board is meeting, and, okay. So then, moving, is there any other announcements or reports from council members?
I have a couple of things I'd like to touch on. So I'll just go off the top here. On March 26, we, as the council, made a motion to have our planning committee create an ordinance with state law for the production and sale of marijuana. It's been very clear that the planning committee is not interested in providing this ordinance to us to adopt. I know they did meet recently. They do need more direction, they haven't brought that. I was hoping Jamie would be here tonight, but he is not. The other thing I'd like to touch upon is, I, I was told if, if we attend the meetings that we're supposed to recuse ourselves, and that's how, that's what someone mentioned tonight about recusing ourselves. I don't work for David Rand, I, I used to. I don't, I don't own anything that to do with the marijuana, own the store, I don't own anything. So there's no reason for me to recuse myself on something that I'm not part of. However, I was told by our earlier City Manager, Mr. Day, that any of us council members attended the Planning Commission meetings, then we're supposed to recuse ourselves, because we're not allowed to go to that and to vote on it. I have not done that. I don't know if other council members have. If they have, that would be a reason to recuse ourselves, not any other reason. The only benefit I get from marijuana being in Sunnyside is I don't have to drive 400 miles to either Seattle or Spokane, because that's the only two places in the state that offers medicine for my condition. It's a medicinal thing that I use, and it's not available, that's 400 miles. The other thing I get is the money spent here is money that's put into our economy, here, locally, which is a fair amount of money that our budget needs. Okay, so with that, what I would like to do tonight is I would like to make a motion to have our City Manager create an ordinance in accordance with state law for the sale and the production of marijuana. If that is done, I would also like to have that ready for us to adopt at our next city meeting or for us to vote on at our next council. Okay, that's the motion I have prepared.
Motion on the floor to take the ordinance and just.
The motion is to have the City Manager create an ordinance in accordance with state law for the sale and production of marijuana.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second for the purposes of debate. I want to ask a couple of questions here.
Okay, so the motion is by Mr. Henry, seconded by Mr. Restucci. Is there discussion and/or debate?
Madam Mayor, if I can?
Yes, Mr. Restucci.
Okay. So I have a concern, and I don't think the manager can answer it. I think we'll need to have the attorney answer it, and that is, state law, the Planning Commission was created by the City Council, but was created under RCW, it's created under state law, as the land use body, the provisioning body of the, of the city. And so I'm, I'm not sure if we're required by law to have them produce that document and bring it forward for us, or if it's something that can be done by the City Manager's office. That's my only concern, Mr. Henry.
I did ask legal about that, they did say it ultimately came down to the City Manager.
Okay. And so you're directing the, so I clarify here, you're directing the Planning Commission, or you're directing the City Manager to create the ordinance?
And the last time we did with the Planning Committee, if he would like to touch base with the Planning Committee and have what they have, that would be wonderful, but I would like to put it on the City Manager's shoulders and not our Planning Committee because of the bias and the things that have occurred with certain members of the.
Planning Commission?
Yes.
Understand, okay.
Well, as I understand it, and just as part of the discussion, the, the City Manager, or, excuse me, the Planning Commission has created a ordinance with adult entertainment zones, which are already been adopted by the City Council, by the council.
Right.
So therefore, there, in that regard, then, their job as the Planning Commission has already been satisfied. Would that be correct, Mr. Restucci?
You know, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm not an attorney, but my concern here is this. When the Planning Commission produced the document, it was before major changes were done by the legislature when it came to the law. The law has changed multiple times since the Planning Commission produced the document that they brought before this council.
Are you talking about the ordinance?
The ordinance itself, correct. The ordinance, Madam. So my, my only concern is that our, the, the body that's supposed to handle land use is the Planning Commission. We should direct them to review the documentation. The last thing that we got from the Planning Commission was a question, basically, my understanding, April of 2018, the Planning Commission discussed potential language to address marijuana and set a public hearing date for June 20, June 12, 2018. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and sent forward a motion to the City Council that they were to uphold the laws of the Constitution in their oath of office. Marijuana is not legal according to the federal government and therefore should be banned within the city. That's not the Planning Commission's purview, they shouldn't be making those kind of decisions. There's nothing wrong with our oaths of office, and we are all working and performing our duties within the law. Yeah, federal law does trump state law, but that's not our purview as a City Council, and we shouldn't even be involved in that. And the Planning Commission, which is an arm of the City Council, shouldn't be making those decisions either. And I don't believe they receive that from legal counsel, that advice from legal counsel. So they're the arm of our council, as far as I'm concerned. I appointed the majority of those people on that Planning Commission. They're supposed to do the bidding of the council. When the council directs them to do something, they're supposed to do it, not question the authority or question the council. Now, they put a question before us about whether or not we wanted to continue to move forward after they received the letters from the school district and the superintendent, and I understand that. And so our answer to them should have been yes, period, and move on.
And that's what.
Three bags full, drive forward.
I think that's what was done at the last meeting.
It was.
We did that at the last meeting.
Right, and what I, there's, there, we need more direction as of last meeting.
No, our direction to them was that.
No, they had, they just had a meeting.
Well, that I, I don't know what the results of that mean.
It wasn't on the agenda, because it wasn't enough time to put it on.
The Planning Commission did meet this Tuesday, this past, the past Tuesday.
Have an update?
Mr., just excuse me a moment, Mr. Martin, or Mr. Casey, excuse me. If you would give us an update on what the Planning Commission did discuss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I did not attend the full meeting, it was their organizing and planning session for the year. They nominated their officers and so forth. So I did attend the very beginning of it and introduced myself to each of the members and had a brief opportunity to interact with them. After the meeting, I asked for an update from department staff that attended and provided staff support to it, and that's our planning person, Jamie Eiling. His characterization or summary of the conversation was that, as staff, per the direction of the council, he had provided an update to the committee, or, excuse me, to the commission on the council's affirmation of their prior direction to move forward with development of a draft ordinance that could then be brought back to the council for its consideration if at such time the council were to take an action related to the current ban that's in place on marijuana. He reported to me that it did not seem to meet with opposition or discussion, just that it was received as information to the Planning Commission, and that's been incorporated into their work agenda for the year. I don't have a, I don't know that they set a date for when they would complete that, but that is something that we'll be following up on. But I didn't get a, he did not report back that there was a, that he sensed a need or that there was confusion around the council's direction. If that's helpful.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, yes, Mr. Restucci.
So, Mr. City Manager, so, so then, is the Planning Commission questioning our direction to them? Or are they, have they received it and they are actively working it, and there is no need for this motion?
It's my understanding that they have received that direction, and I'm not aware of any confusion or debate or dispute over it.
Could I add something? Last time that we voted on this, the Planning Commission meets the Tuesdays after our workshops. And so it's a public meeting, and they did not have time to put it on the agenda to be, for the public to know that it was part of the meeting, and the same thing happened last week. We sent it back after, at the meeting last Monday, and they met Tuesday, so they did not have time to put it on. not have time to put it on their agenda for Tuesday night, that's the way I understand.
But they received our direction. That's all I'm concerned about. Just like when the House and the Senate send stuff back and forth, did they receive our direction? If they did, then I don't see anything, I don't see the need for...
March twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. They have no desire, that's why I asked or made the motion to have our city manager write the ordinance and to provide it for us to vote on, on the next council, because they will never bring it to us.
Well, I disagree with, I disagree with you there.
I do. I haven't, I haven't received, I haven't heard that from them.
I don't think we ever will hear it.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this, or is council...
From what I, from what I'm hearing, council is that, um, you know, the planning commission has its direction from us. So as far as I'm concerned, this motion doesn't need to be made. But, Mr. Henry, I, I supported your motion. We can continue to debate it, but I don't see the need to send them another direction if they already have our direction.
You're right. I don't want to send direction to the planning commission at all. I would like to send direction to, um, city manager. That's what I would like to send. And just completely skip the, the planning commission. They have...
Yeah, and I can't do that.
Their effort to it.
I, I personally like to see the planning commission complete their work. I know they, there's obviously differences in opinion that we do have at the council level as well, and I, I don't see how they are not going to do the work knowing that that's part of the directive. And as far as us seeing a final product, I do want to see a final product, that we can make a decision whether we work for or against it. And obviously, it's been a long time already since March of last year, um, but I do want to see, I would, I, I prefer the planning commission to finish their work. I mean, as much as I want to see, to see, finally put this to bed, I will want to see the planning commission's work before we, I make a decision on it.
And I have to agree with the deputy mayor on this one. Like I said, I, I appointed those people to the planning commission. I, I respect them. A lot of them are former council members or, you know, have served a long time. So, I mean, the planning commission chair is no, no secret, it's my mother-in-law, but she's been the planning commission chair for fourteen years and on the commission for eighteen years, longer than I've served on the council.
Without, without being said also, obviously, there is, I think we should have a little bit more sense of urgency because it seemed, it does seem like we are doing a lot of feet dragging at the, at the planning commission. It's been, it's going to be a year and a couple of months, and I'm not sure, you know, when I sat on the planning commission, it didn't typically take us long to go through some of this stuff, you know, two, three months max, and we were done with it. So, I, I mean, if we don't see the next month or two, then, you know, I, I guess we might have to take a next step and do something about it because, I mean, this has been going on for way too long, I think. We need to, you know, put it to rest already, one way or another.
Can we put pressure on to...
So, can I just say, perhaps we want to put a timeline on how long they continue to work on this before we take further action? I don't, I don't know that there's a reason why we would need to, but if we are, as Mr. Guerrero said, are the dragging of their feet, if we can just get it back here so that we can, you know, get the ordinance in front of us, um, then make the decision from there.
Well, ultimately, we make the decision, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
So, um, but the planning commission is an arm of this council, and they have a tasking, and I, like Mr. Guerrero, I'd like to see them complete their tasking before we reach in there and take it away from them and bring it back to us and start doing something with it.
And I'm just, my, my question is, is do we want to put a timeline on it?
Could we do it the next one? Could we have it by the next one? Next meeting?
May, just a point of information. I think the city manager would need to weigh in with Mr. Eiling, right?
As I was going to say, that was going to be my point of inquiry. I don't know, Shane, do you happen to know, Mr. Fisher, do you happen to know when the planning commission's next meeting is scheduled and...
It should, it's the second Tuesday of, of February.
Second Tuesday of February?
It's their next meeting, so it's, it will follow our next regular scheduled, or our first regularly, regular scheduled meeting in February. It's always that Tuesday.
Okay. And then the council's next meeting, as you know, would then be the twenty-fifth of February. So that would give some time for materials to be received back from the planning commission before your late February meeting or early March?
So their, their next regular meeting would be the twelfth, correct? The second Tuesday?
Correct, the twelfth.
And so our next meeting after that will be the twenty-fifth, because we'll have a meeting the eleventh and they meet the twelfth.
That's correct.
Could we put it on the count, or the agenda for that, then?
Madam Mayor?
Um, yes, Mr. Guerrero, uh, Mr. Borst.
Before we go that direction, um, I think this is an issue that we want to have all seven of council members present for, and I will not be there on the February twenty-fifth, so...
That's right, you did say that you were gone.
And I won't be there at the February eleventh. I'll be at a commission meeting in Olympia.
So then, if we give them as, as a timeline, perhaps, if we move that to the, um, what would be the first in March, do we have a calendar here we can...
The eleventh is the first regular meeting in March?
Yes. March eleventh is correct. Thank you, sir.
Is that agreeable?
I guess it has to be, and it's the majority of council. If that's what majority council thinks, then I disagree with that. I would like to see it done today, but if majority would like to see it done on the eleventh, then let's do it on the eleventh.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And just real quick on those timelines, I mean, and we've got to be aware also that when they're done doing their business and they get that back to us or back to, to you guys, uh, Mr. Casey, it's going to take some time. We're going to go through legal. We have ordinances that've got to be, they've got to go through current law groups. So I think that first week in March, the first meeting in March is, is probably the best we could probably do. I think to, to expect to turn it around between the twelfth and the twenty-fifth of February would be pretty difficult to make sure the ordinance is, is gone through legal review. So I think that first meeting in March is probably, um, is probably the, the correct, the correct timeline.
Okay, I appreciate that, Shane, very much.
All right.
So, Madam Mayor, we have, point of order, we have a motion on the table.
We have a motion on, on the board. We have been discussing, discussing this.
But our rules of procedure allow for the mover in the second or to withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw the motion for...
And I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
Are we clear about the eleventh?
We are, we are, we are in agreement to...
Are we also in agreement about the recusation of ourselves if we've...
Well, that's a, that's a separate matter that'll have to come as a personal...
Do, is that something that we just admit, or...
Actually, just so you understand, because I, and this is context, council members, because I've been down this road many times before in the last fifteen years, the, the city attorney will tell you that the decision whether or not to recuse yourself falls on you and your office, and no member of this council can coerce you into doing anything. If you don't feel you have a conflict of interest, then you can sit there and vote. If you feel that you have a conflict of interest, then you're supposed to recuse yourself and leave the room.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, and that's pretty much been in occurrence also with the open meeting...
Correct, Madam Mayor, and the appearance of fairness doctrine.
Appearance of fairness. Okay, so then the directive to our, um, to you, to the planning commission then will be that they're meeting on the twelfth. They will begin that process. They have until, to bring it back to us so that we have it through legal and back to us by March eleventh, correct? We in agreement?
We're in agreement. I have, quick caveat, just because I mentioned that, I'm not giving legal advice because I'm not an attorney.
You have to check, of course.
So I have to say those things. But the other thing is, if you don't recuse yourself and there is a conflict of interest and an attorney sues the city, it can call in question the entire process, just so you're aware of that. So when you go, when you decide whether or not to recuse yourself, think long and hard about it. We had a land use issue here and with my in-laws own the land. I don't have any access to that land or anything in that nature, but my wife is an heir. And so as far as I'm concerned, I might own that land someday, so I recused myself when the city was purchasing the property.
And, and as, and that also, I think, goes towards when you talk about people who may be recusing anybody from the council who may or may not have attended one of the planning commission meetings, you know, because that gives kind of an unfair kind of situation can, appearance-wise. So just, just keep that in mind as well.
I got, I got yelled at by the former mayor, Ed Kaluchek, for going to a planning commission meeting, so...
Yeah, so that's something to keep under. Any other reports, announcements, and or questions by council? Hearing none, we'll move right, rapidly and unassuredly right along to the council request status report, correct? That's next on our...
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, it is up on screen now, sorry, thank you. Very briefly, the first item, this is, has to do with retail standards. This has been, uh, brought into the purview of the discussion around the community forum on, that Roger Brooks presented, and I believe will be part of the ongoing conversation with the Community Development Committee, so we can update that, uh, after this meeting to, to reflect that new information about your schedule that, uh, you have set, uh, this evening. I do not, I apologize, I do not have a, any update or information regarding the Roerman Avenue issue. I'm not familiar with that one, and...
Mr. Shane?
Can Mr. Fisher provide anything on that?
Um, yeah, there's, I mean, this is that project up on Roerman we're all aware of. We were looking for funding, um, to, to get that, you know, turned into a park or, there's a lot of moving parts with that. There was some land acquisition, um, it's Yellowstone Trail, we're still trying to get, possibly get, um, you know, some help from the Department of Historical Preservation. So there's still some irons in the fire on that. Obviously, we don't have, uh, the, the funds on hand to be able to go in there and do what we want to do, but I think we, of course, it's up to you guys to keep following up on this. If it's still something the council desires to, to keep moving forward and try to find a, a solution to this, um, thorn in our side up there, and it's, it's pretty unsightly, and I'd love to get it cleaned up, but, um, funds permitting.
Mr. City Manager, you might reach out to Jerry Honeyford. She is a gubernatorial appointee, um, on the Historical Commission for the state. She helped with the Barnes. We've talked to her in the past, but it might be something you want to reach out to her and see if there's state funds available or something of that nature. The Yellowstone Trail is something we don't want to lose. We want to protect it because the other cities in the valley have covered it over in, in most cases, so...
And, and, and Granger, they've just simply put up some really painted gold, as in Yellowstone, uh, rocks to designate where the, the Yellowstone Road Highway was a transcontinental highway, first one. And, uh, so they know where theirs is at. Grandview has a marking out on the map in, uh, the Grandview pavement, uh, where it was stamped. It was stamped every mile or so at the end of the day. So we have a spot over here on this Roerman Avenue, if you ever are just taking a walk around.
I'll look forward to it.
Uh, you can see it, so, but it is something we do want to save. It's the one, you know, it can be a destination in our city that people just forget that little bit of our history. So, um, we are part of the Yellowstone Highway. It's a little bitty strip, but nonetheless, we'd like to preserve it.
Thank you for that suggestion, counselor, and we'll look, continue to look into that.
Okay. So, and we've talked about the next one there a little?
Uh, yes, we have talked about the, uh, processes underway for the Community Development Ordinance, and that committee will be meeting later this week. That may also address item, the last item on the agenda, the Small Self IG. I, it listed that it would be discussed at the next, at the first community development meeting. That, I know, makes that a, a very full agenda. Jumping back up, uh, I'll ask, uh, Mr. Fisher if he has an update regarding the accessible parking zone or accessible ramp for the senior center?
Absolutely. And, uh, if you guys remember, we had applied for an AARP grant, um, in twenty eighteen, and we're not successful. Uh, so we are going to apply for it again this year, and hopefully, keep fingers crossed, we'll, uh, we'll get that thing funded. It's about a, I think it's about a seventy thousand dollar improvement, so, um, as much as I think everybody'd love to go in and just to remove all the sidewalks and it would be easy and quick to do, ADA requirements for federal, for, through the, the feds is, is, is very expensive and, and, um, it's going to take a little bit to get that corrected, so...
And if I may, Mr. Fisher, if you could also update on the tree replacement plan?
Yeah, this is, uh, this has been ongoing, I think it's all been ongoing. Yeah, and this is, uh, basically the trees from downtown that we've taken out, some of the unsightly trees that have bulged sidewalks. I think this year we are going to take some trees out, but instead of replacing them back in with, um, with, just with sidewalks, if we have, and we've got quite a few water meters downtown, and we've talked with the water guys about this, abandoned meters that aren't being used. Instead of pulling those out, maybe leave them in, we can use those to, to put in some sort of a, a irrigation or drip system. So instead of pulling these trees out, um, we, we leave about a six by six, you know, open it just like the downtown trees used to be, or I guess the ones around the gazebo have, I think, are six by six, uh, cast iron grates that go on them. They kind of keep that same type look. Um, and right now, we can't put trees back, we have no way to water them. They, they won't survive, so, um, so that's something we need to, we need to figure out. But we are still working towards that replacement, um, not just to leave the streets stark and bare, once we pull those little trees out.
Okay. That's, I think that's probably a good, uh, way to approach it since there are some abandoned water meters. I know they've, they've tried digging them up in different places, and, uh, perhaps that's as, as good a remedy. Okay.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. That's, uh, I believe that's all the items that we have at this time.
Okay. Okay. So then we have our, our agenda planning schedule here?
Yes.
And like you said, there's quite a bit on that for the twenty-eighth. Oh, boy. Do you want to take that too?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Coming up on the planning agenda for January twenty-eighth would be your first review of the draft Community Development Ordinance, uh, following council's discussion and feedback. That would be, uh, potentially seeking direction as far as readiness to send to our, uh, legal counsel for their, uh, review and, uh, assessment of it. Uh, we are also exploring, uh, bringing forward the resolutions for the Transportation Benefit District to establish that district, and then we are also researching currently, uh, the process whereby the Transportation Benefit Board that we established under that district might then go forward on their decision-making for setting the fee.
Madam Mayor, I have a quick question, if I could ask the manager?
Yes, please.
On the TBD, um, uh, my, my spies tell me that Mr. Iman has over three hundred and fifty-four thousand signatures and a good shot at passing, and so just wondering, what do we know? Because everything I've heard says that it could wipe out every TBD in the state.
That's my understanding as well, is that the initiative is crafted in such a way as to essentially rescind or remove the authority of local governments to, uh, use such a device to, or such a district to actually raise any revenue. The, the district, I think, could still go forward, but you would not be able to, um, use it to raise any revenue. Shane and, Mr. Fisher and I have had a brief conversation about that, uh, just in terms of monitoring the process and, uh, evaluating kind of what our plans were for the potential revenues that, uh, the city might generate. We need a little more time to evaluate that, but I could bring that back as a discussion item at a future workshop, if it's the preference of the, or interest of the council, to give you a sense of what we were planning to do, refresh, uh, that information and, uh, help you have that context. It, uh, it is definitely going to be a consideration in how you determine to move forward and the timing with which you move forward, given that new variable in the...
Well, with cities like Seattle, you know, pushing for sixty dollars a tab, um, I think that's what's caused a lot of the problems. But one of the things that I was very interested in is that, um, the cities that are doing sales tax for their TBD, they won't be affected the same way with Mr. Iman. So it might be interesting to look at that.
And we have, uh, Mr. Ristucci, and we had talked about that at one of our meetings, about the, uh, putting in a sales tax, knowing, of course, we'd have to take that to the, to the voters.
Right.
Um, so there's that possibility, raising the sales tax for the, uh, TIB. But again, that's a little more different process. Um, and, but that puts us out there again. Special election, those are like thirty thousand dollars to put on. We're too late for the one in February on the twelfth, so, um, you know, trying to, trying to come up with something for the funding for this year, um, is a, is an issue, so, but nonetheless, that is a, that is a possibility, and, and as council, we have discussed that to some, uh, some degree, and we're still kind of on the, I think, on the fence about it a little bit. bit.
Well, as the only member of council who was sitting here when I-695 passed, I can tell you, that killed us, $400,000 to our budget overnight.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a big consideration, obviously.
Yes.
Okay. If you would, sir, continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item is project acceptance related to Sixth Avenue and Yakima Valley Highway, and ask Mr. Fisher if you have a little more detail on what will be coming up on that.
That's just the project acceptance through TIB. We're done with this, we've got final documents coming in. We don't normally go through this process with you guys. I had a conversation with HLA this afternoon, saw it come in, there was a letter that came with it. And apparently, in the past, and there's no requirement, per se, there might be something out there, but HLA likes us to come to council so you guys can see what the final numbers are. We're under budget on that project for the grant, so we're in good shape. But so anyways, we, I think, moving forward, we're going to start when we finish these projects up, so you guys can see the final numbers. I mean, you guys do authorize us to apply, or the city manager to apply for these, these grants, and then you authorize the spending of these funds. So I think in, in good faith, I think having you guys look at the final numbers or know these projects, I think is something we probably should start doing from now on.
Sounds like good, good, best practices to do that sort of thing.
And Madam Mayor, council members, the final two items, you've had some briefing on this previously. These are related to the ambulance services for Grandview. As part of that, we're also entering into an agreement with Austria Hospital. Those agreements are simply under review right now with Kerr Law Group. They committed to us that they would have their review completed by the end of this week, and that's the reason they've been put onto the 28th's agenda.
Okay.
At this time, we do, at this time, as you see, the workshop and February meetings are still wide open for your suggestions.
So are there any things that we've been working on that we want to bring forward at workshop here at the...
Do we want to bring, I mean, do we want to bring up the tiny housing, perhaps, another workshop, now that we've had a little, I know I like, which way I like to go, but I'd like to hear everyone else's direction, if we have a direction as a whole. I'd like to get that done ASAP, because I'd definitely, after hearing what I heard today, set forward on what I would like to do. And it's definitely a cry further from when I started, I'll tell you that, way further from when we started. So I am glad we did go through this.
Okay. I'm not sure just what more we can bring forward, but...
Well, I think with what Mr. Madison brought us was, you know, some of this information about, you know, the International Building Code and the appendix queue, I think we just need to review that, go through. Andy is in Maui right now, so he won't be reviewing it between now and then, but me and Jamie will take a look at it.
Going to send his postcard?
If he does, he's a stud.
Yeah.
He's not going to do that.
Well, we just need to take a look at it. I mean, obviously, everybody in this, everybody's using the International Building Code, so it's really not going to be much different for us than it is for anybody else, but it doesn't mean we can't take a look at it, especially when it talks about zoning, when your R2 and R3 zones are medium and high-density zones that would possibly, potentially allow something like this. I'm not sure, you know, his comment about commercial industrial zones, I'm not, that's something else you guys have to discuss, but we can at least look and see what it would take for us to try to get this done.
Is that something that we could talk about at the February 4th workshop, or, okay? All right.
And if the council wishes, that would be an opportunity for us to hear from all of the council members on your reactions and thoughts on what you've heard to date, and then that may serve as a platform to give us direction to take back, either to the Planning Commission or to staff for further research and deliberation.
That sounds good. Does that sound reasonable, folks?
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
Okay, so that's at least one item. Is there anything else from council that you would want to have on the workshop, or is that satisfactory for now?
I'm a big fan of one or two items on a workshop, Madam Mayor. This way, we can actually dig into them, spend 20, 30 minutes on each item.
So if we just have the one item for now, if we come up with something else, then we may add it, but for now, this is, this is plenty. I agree.
And I'll collect what I can from the National League of Cities and the Association of Washington Cities on tiny houses, so that we have it for the meeting.
I think, I think there are some codes that some other cities are putting in, maybe we can reach back to...
MRC has the ordinances, so we can get them there.
Yeah, some trials there, and I know that there have been some different ones, like Walla Walla may have their code that we might be able to also look into.
One I wanted to get, I mean, is Ocean Shores, they've kind of broke some ground on what it is they're doing with small houses.
Well, we've seen what Yakima did and didn't do, I mean, how they didn't do it, so we have the benefit of that, so. And Mr. Shuttleworth is another good resource, too, at the YVCO for, as an engineer. Okay, so planning for the February 11th? Anything, any thoughts there?
At this time, I don't think we have any known items coming forward for action. We have not had a, we've just had one internal planning discussion, leadership team meeting, and we'll be having our second one tomorrow.
So there may be something...
There may be something coming out of that. And when I get to the, when we get to the city manager's update, I was going to share an update about the, our planning process.
Sure, we can do that. But I was just wondering, anything from council that, do we want, and one of the things that was on the, the original request status reform was about the 5G...
On small cell 5G wireless?
Yeah, we're going to be talking about that community development meeting that I think...
Right, but it's actually tied up in a lawsuit, Madam Mayor, back east, and until that gets resolved, no cities are adopting 5G.
Okay, so we're just...
With the government shutdown right now, the FCC is not even doing anything with frequencies right now.
Okay, fine. I just thought I'd see what we could do with that, but okay.
Longest government shutdown.
Yeah.
Longest government shutdown, yes.
All right, well, then we will find some items to put on it as we go along, but moving along then, we do have...
Do you still want me to add the marijuana or wood from March 11th? I just want to make sure.
Oh, yes.
Yes, yes.
That's all it is for the...
Yes, do it. I didn't see that on this particular list, but if you would, please.
Let's add it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Okay, so then we, we already discussed when our meeting, next meetings are, so we should know all of that. We have a 28th and February 4th and February 11th. So items from city manager and department heads, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Speaking from the experience of a full week on the job, I am, want to share a little bit of an update about my activities so far to give you and the community a sense of some of how my time has been spent. Much of this first week, I had the opportunity to meet, have welcome meetings with all of the council members. I think just my impression of the robust and diverse conversations, there are some clear, very common themes and commitments that are very strong to the city's financial stability, to continuing community and economic development, to our public safety and emergency services, strengthening our public infrastructure, and something that kind of goes on behind the scenes, but continuing to work on strengthening our work processes and our business processes as a city. All things that I look forward to spending time on. I've also had an opportunity to have welcome meetings, meet and greets with almost all of the city's staff departments. We did have to delay Public Works by a week because of some pressing matters that they were out there working on last week, but that's been very, been going very well. I also want to express my appreciation for having been invited to the Firefighters' Annual Award Dinner, and I'll invite Chief Anderson to share a little more with you about that event during his report, but it was a lovely event and very humbling to hear the depth of service and commitment that both our career firefighters, but also the volunteers, have for serving the community. Spending a lot of time familiarizing myself with city operations, had a chance to watch the Roger Brooks presentation, which was fascinating, starting to meet with residents, and overall, just really appreciating the enthusiasm and commitment that I'm hearing from everybody that I engage with in support of Sunnyside. Coming up for this week, tomorrow night, I'll be attending the Airport Advisory Board Meeting. On Wednesday, attending the YVCO General Membership Meeting. And then just continuing this effort of learning and observing over the next four to six months, city operations, the community, I'm hoping to get out and observe, attend a meeting of each of the advisory boards and committees, commissions that the city has, starting to get to know the other city managers and administrators in the Yakima Valley. I'm interested in learning also more about potential partners in other local governments and with our educational institutions. And then sometime here in the next few weeks, just starting to explore the idea of holding some form of, like a community meet and greet, similar to the meet and greet that the council sponsored during the hiring process, but a chance for, informally, for me to just spend some time and have a chance for the community to come in, visit, and ask questions. So, lot going on. It's been a great first week. I'm delighted to be here, and with that, I'll turn it over to the department directors to give their updates, unless the council has any questions.
We're glad you're here for another week.
Back for week two, absolutely.
Week two, you bet.
Good evening, council members and mayor. So yeah, we had our annual awards banquet and installation of the volunteer, the administrative officers of the volunteer organization Saturday night, and it was a good time. Mr. Casey came and spoke on, and represented the city, it's top-notch, thank you. A couple of things that are, that might be kind of interesting, so is we're starting operationally in the fire department, we're starting a pilot program, actually just started today. We're putting CPR, mechanical, automated CPR devices on the ambulances. We're doing, we're going to try three different types over the next 60 days. So I would invite each of you to come by at some point, if possible, and take a look at them. We're going to try to involve the hospitals, emergency room, and the cardiac cath lab, with the end goal that hopefully we'll be able to get patients moved a little bit faster to the cath lab a little bit faster, and hopefully save a few more lives. Additionally, we've, basically, once we get the training down, everyone's kind of settled in the newspaper, we're hoping that, so that we can kind of get the message out to the community that after the increase in the ambulance utility, that maybe this is, this is one of those benefits that we had envisioned, and that we're going to make sure that they're aware of. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Can I ask you just a quick question? Who was the Fireman of the Year?
Oh, it was, so the award, award winners this year, so Ed Laverman, Alan Van Beek, and Miguel Barrios.
Because he's mad at me because I always spell his name wrong. I just think he has a different name.
Brenda, I think Brenda's his sister, correct?
Yeah, I think he's related, she's related. Alan got which award?
I don't have it written down which one he got the...
I'll call you tomorrow.
Yep.
But thank you.
Please let me know, Madam Mayor, because I'll see him tomorrow at the Airport Board Meeting, so I'd like to recognize him.
I'll send you a, you know, when I find out.
Thank you.
Or we'll just CC you in on it.
I'll bring it all out to you.
Okay. Good, 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 good. All right, thank you.
And I just, a quick update on the Stackhouse Bridge project. Agreement, everything came in, Mr. Casey signed a pay request today to get things moving. Not the contracts yet, they haven't completely come in yet. Looking second week of February for that project to start. And of course, we'll notice the papers and, and of course, fire and police, so they're aware of the, you know, having to go all the way around to get up the hill, so it's going to cause a little bit, there's going to be some delays in response, but we'll do what we can to try to get that up and going as quick as we can. Looking at about a, about a 40-day build time on that, so they're going to get all the concrete work done, down in the ditch, get up out of the water line, so when the water comes back on in March, that they'll be working above the water, so. Start second week of February, and we'll keep you updated as we, as we move through that.
Quick question for Shane. There was a couple of water main breaks a few weeks ago, is there, can you give us an update on those?
Yes, it was actually last week, that was what Mr. Casey was referring to. Well, we had, initially, we had a coupling, a repair coupling out at Ninth and Custer, and it was seeping out of the road, one of the utility building girls was coming into work that morning, about eight o'clock or so, and saw it. Called the water guys in, no sooner did they get out to that, we had a water line break at Sixth and Notice. And what we think happened is we had, we had people up on the hill, we had valves shut off, so we have Apollo up there on our, on our standpipe, they were changing some valves out. So in order to, to get those valves changed out of a reservoir that's, that's in service, you have to shut valves off in, in other areas to isolate that. And so then what happened, when the leak happened at Ninth and Custer, the lower reservoirs at Grandview, they start losing ground, so as soon as they start to lose a little bit of water, the SCADA system, as it's supposed to, kicks a well on, which is what it's designed to do. So it kicked well six on, well, what happened was, is that, and of course, Daniel saw it, so, you know, because it tells him, well's kicking on, and he immediately turned the well off. Well, it was too late, it already went through the soft start process, and it started that well. Well, what happens then, when you isolate certain parts of the city to get some on, you no longer have that looping. So what, what happens, it causes what they call water hammer. So the water hammer, basically, right there, Sixth and Notice, blew the bonnet, and the bonnet is the top of the valve, it's got eight or 10 bolts on the top that actually hold the valve, the actual stem that closes the valve. There's so much pressure, it actually blew that bonnet right off the top of the valve, so it took us to about eight o'clock, 8:30 that night, before we got the water back on on that, that end of the world, so. There were some takeaways from that, of course, you know, when do you ever have two main breaks at the same time? So the guys learned a lot, we had a great response, everybody from Public Works was involved, it was all hands on deck, so I'm very pleased with that. But there, like I said, there were some takeaways, there were some things we would do different next time. Part of that is, I think we, we need to address the break at Sixth and Notice, where there was a larger impact on, on the citizens. There was, people were out of water there for a long time. They had fixed one at Ninth first, and then went to the one at Sixth. In hindsight, we will, we will reevaluate that in future double line breaks, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I just ask a question, it's not related to water breaks and/or bridges, but the Christmas tree at the bandstand? Can somebody take that out of there? It's not been, it's been just, didn't we put, didn't we set it up, Public Works set it up for the Christmas?
All decorations are off, it's just the tree that's in there.
All the decorations, it's just the trees left in there. They didn't take the tree away, they, whoever undecorated it, didn't remove the tree, and it's, now it's like a giant shrub.
How do I not notice that when I drive?
I go by every day to see if it's accidentally gone.
Here, I'm going to refer back to the Roger Brooks presentation, where he's showing us these slides, and I'm thinking, there's a sign right there? I drive by them every day, but we don't realize that there's...
It's a tree right there. Yeah, if you could.
Yes, we will, I'll have Mitch and the guys go in the morning and take that down.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mr. Casey, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I was asked to provide just a real quick overview of code enforcement summary for 2018. In doing so, I submitted a memo to Mr. Casey, and it just kind of outlines some, some of the goals of code enforcement and also the duties and investigations that that individual does. In 2018, he, he responded to and also self-initiated a total of 506 calls for service for the year. 273 of those calls were reactive calls for service that were integrated with both PD complaints and citywide, cities, or, I'm sorry, citizen complaints, citywide. Additionally, he was, he self-generated another additional 233 calls for service, which is very significant for one individual to do. The, you know, they did, there were, there were some significant choking points that we experienced along the way. This is relatively new to the police department, of course, with, with the integration of code enforcement, and there are some things that aren't captured and things that are. However, some of the, the major obstacles are going, are our own ordinances, and so those ordinances, you know, I'll be bringing a lot of that to, to Mr. Casey for review and for discussion, just because of the timelines and the things that, that really can stretch out any enforcement ability for, for months. And, and it makes it very hard to be able to, to get any teeth into something when we have to stretch out for very long. So we'll be bringing some, some potential remedies and potential solutions to him and some things that we may want to try in the future that will require council action because of the adjustments that may be made to, to council or to the, to the ordinances, but really, that's where we're going to concentrate, is the timelines, so. But overall, out of the 506, he was very busy, it's an extremely productive position, there was, we have a significant compliance rate in some areas, in some areas, we don't because of the timelines, so it is, it could be minimized in that respect. Also, capturing events, or not necessarily events, but capturing what he actually does is not developed in Spillman. So Spillman is our record management system, that is a system that is designed currently in this city primarily for law enforcement use. city primarily for law enforcement use. We use it the majority of the time, we use it daily and nightly. And it's not set up to capture what our code enforcement officer does. And so, we have made arrangements with city, or with the county IT specialist to come in, and I believe he comes in tomorrow. And he's gonna sit down and restructure that for us. We gave him a list of, of offenses that we would like to be included in there. And it's a very good list and it's significant, however, it's a good starting point. There are things that I'd like to capture in those lists, and one of those are compliance, are basically ordinance compliance days per violation. Because, you know, one could have three days, the other one can have seven days, yet another violation could have forty-five days. And so, I, I need to kind of part that out if it's possible in Spelman. And that I don't know until we actually get into this a little bit. But it is continually evolving. And mid-February, we do have our, our annual reports that are due. And so, there'll be a little bit more of a comprehensive breakdown as to what code enforcement has done in 2018.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Chief?
Oh, I, just, just as a, as a New Year's Eve revelry, gunshot in the air, where'd the bullets land? And the firecrackers, you know, we have an ordinance against those. But I'm just wondering if you had very many calls where, where the bullets might have landed? Because there were a lot of them going off.
That, that actual bullets have landed? You know, and...
Just curious where they did. I didn't have any...
Yeah.
I had firecrackers wake me up a couple of times.
That is, that's a very good question. Yeah, destination of the bullet after it's been fired is, in the air, is pretty tough to track, for sure.
Goes up, must come down.
Yes, it does. It comes down, where it comes down?
Yeet.
Yeah.
We were lucky, Grandview had a couple of them come down in houses.
Oh, yeah.
Couple of, couple of automobiles, so.
City of Sunnyside had one in the trailer court uptown, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, they may have, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Pretty loud.
There was...
I stayed in my basement that day.
Yeah, well, I had no place to hide. I have no ba, I don't have a basement. My dogs and I were pretty shook up, though, so. All right, well, thank you, sir. All right.
Mayor, before we adjourn, I do have a couple of things. One of them I probably should have brought up earlier under announcements by council members. But a couple days before Christmas, former mayor of the city of Granger passed away due to a heart attack, Mr. David Leach. And he was quite a public servant, very involved in his community as a volunteer, as an elected official. And I've known him and his extended family for many, many years. So, I'd like to express condolences to, to the city of Granger, but also to his family. The second thing is, and you and I have talked about this, I just want to make sure that I get this out in advance, to make sure that I don't forget on our next meeting. But in the month of February, I would like to request an excused absence for the workshop, and both regular meetings and any special meetings for the month of February. I will be taking further steps in fulfilling a lifelong dream and doing some things that I've been thinking about for many years. And so, I'm going to take the opportunity to do that in February.
Okay. I think we can agree with a month's notice, or at least two weeks, yeah, a month's notice, to allow that. Is there any objection from the rest of the council? Hearing that, you're excused.
Thank you.
All right. So, if there's nothing further to come before the council, without objection, we are adjourned.